Of course, I'm Commissioner Garrett Cole. We have with us Commissioners Craig Chapman and Lloyd Atkins. And to our right, your left, we have County Clerk Robert Painter. We want to thank Chief Nowak and Sheriff Nunley for being with us here tonight. And everyone that is here to speak and/or... Let me get this... Hold on one second. How about now? Okay. All right. You said pretty loud, but I'll do a little better. So of course, the purpose of the public hearings tonight are for the magisterial district redistricting the Nicholas County Commission is tasked with every 10 years after each census. Just a few ground rules and then we'll get started. As I read these ground rules, those that would like to speak, not to put you all in the wrong spot there, but if we have such a long list, I won't go through it. But if you don't mind to make a line behind the cameraman here so he can still get everyone on the wall here on your all's right. And then as soon as the person before you is done, go ahead and come up to the mic. And when you come up, we just request that you state your name and then, you know, the community you live in. So you know, for me, it'd be, "I'm Garrett and I'm from Campus." And then you can begin. The purpose of this hearing, of course, alongside the other last night is that the citizens of Nicholas County can express your views, opinions, and concerns to the Nicholas County Commission concerning redistricting in the magisterial districts of Nicholas County. We are eager to hear your ideas, proposals, concerns, and county citizens are invited and encouraged to share their opinions here tonight. We are providing a precinct map that you should have got whenever you signed in up here. On the second page, you will find the current map as it currently is. Proposal number two was removed at the request of Commissioner Atkins because he brought a second proposal. Proposal number three came from WVU GIS and proposal number four was also provided. Of course, we are working with WVU GIS. That has been caused a little bit of a slow turnaround when it comes to our mapping. It's unfortunate we didn't have our maps yesterday, but we do have them here today. You can see them posted in the kitchen bays over there. There's a stack here if anyone would like a copy. And then also, when you came in. These two maps that are provided are proposals only and will be debated and decided on by the Nicholas County Commission on a regularly scheduled meeting of December 15th. And no decision, of course, has been made at this time. This map will reflect some of the precinct adaptations we had to do concerning the House of Delegate districts. However, that did not change anything in the actual magisterial districts at this time. Proposal number three that you'll find again on your second page is map number three. Proposal number four is map number four. Just wanted to clarify that. We will be using county commission procedures to govern this hearing, which includes commissioners are not required to respond to questions or comments during public comment, and that no personal attacks, allegations, or threats will be tolerated. Each presenter will be given three minutes to present their views, opinions, and concerns. When the alarm sounds that I or the clerk will have, that just signifies it's time to wrap up your comments and your presentation. Please state your name and where you live at the beginning of your presentation. And of course, rather on the map that you are provided, there are cards at the front. Any written comments for those who do not wish to speak but share their comments will be accepted and made part of the record as long as they're brought back to this white box here in front of Clerk Painter, and they will be made a part of the record of this public hearing. That being said, like I say, those that would like to speak, if you would start a line behind the cameraman there, and then just, we will cycle through as they will. And I'd like to invite at the request of Commissioner Chapman, that while we are in the city of Richwood, the city of Somersville here, I apologize, that Mayor Schaefer will be given the floor. First. Mr. President.
Actually, I was going to try to go last. I would like to open tonight by saying tonight's a good night to be a mayor and not a county So, you know, I've had a lot to, a lot of time to think about this. Of course, I know that this has been coming as these situations are created every 10 years by the census. And county commissioners...
I won't do that.
All right. County commissioners, you know, there's a lot at stake with this decision that you have to make on the redistricting of the magisterial districts. I want to clearly represent in a real respective way that I am a mayor that's been in office for over a decade, and I am in support of this entire county. Always have been and will continue to be. But I want to be clear tonight that I think there's only one option of the two scenarios that you're presenting that is valid for our future. And that is what you're referring to is map three. Why? First and foremost, in the two maps that you're presenting, population deviation in map three is, presents the least amount of deviation in population. Secondly, the Secretary of State has refused to rule on the issue of the residency mandate of one year applying to the magisterial districts. As a matter of fact, the Secretary of State says, and so what that means is in other words, you're taking an elected official, changing potentially their magisterial district, where if they choose to stay in office and rerun, they would have to run in a different district and would not meet the criteria of one-year residency in that magisterial district. So I challenge you that what you very well may be doing is creating an issue in the courts immediately if you go with map four instead of map three. And straight up, the Secretary of State has refused to respond to that. It's basically going to be a court decision. I think it's pretty simple that this decision comes down to one thing, and it's unfortunate. And that's our Board of Education. And if there's anything that I can say to you that you will take home and rest on between now and December 15th, when you make a decision, it's about one thing and one thing on. Our schools are underway of being built. Our children are the ones suffering in the conditions that they're being educated in now. This has been tried and retried, and it's unfortunate. But I say please allow this process to stay its course. Go with option three and make our children your priority in your decision.
My name is Libby Kaufman. Most of you know me. I currently am a board member of the Nicholas County Board of Education, and I am from the Cherry District. I ran through for the board in 2018 as an impartial candidate that wanted to further the construction of the schools. And at that time, we were waiting on the mediated agreement, which I said I would abide by, and I have. That agreement was to put community schools back in Richwood and a larger comprehensive high school with the Glade Creek property. After five long years of meetings, lawsuits, and many hours of time to plan to build basically, listen to this, seven new schools, we finally see a light at the end of the tunnel. And yes, that's seven state-of-the-art schools. Not just a school over there and a school over there. We're talking about seven schools. We're talking about Richwood Elementary will be upgraded and will be a new school, Richwood Middle, Richwood High School, Somersville Middle School, Nicholas County High School, the Career Tax Center, and of course, the Somersville Elementary will be refitted and it will be other new schools as well. So that's seven schools that have all this money. And, you know, this is going to save the taxpayers about $30 million because there's going to have to be a new school erected for Somersville Elementary. So you need to think about that whenever you're thinking about which plan you want to go with. So after, if Plan Four is put into place with the county commission, it could jeopardize all the work and the monies that has been spent thus far and could potentially start this process all over again. You say, how could that be? If the commission votes to put Birch River in the Birch District, that will eliminate a seat currently held by either myself or Phil Berry. You say, what's the problem with that? Well, that could potentially sway the board to a 3-2 split in favor of getting rid of the superintendent and halting the construction of the new schools as are now planned. The plan put forth by Commissioner Atkins, in my opinion, further divides the people of Nicholas County. I urge you commissioners to leave Birch River in the Cherry District and let us get these schools built. It has been going on for too long. Our kids deserve to get back and stick and stone construct the schools. And the plan that is in place, like I said, will save the people, the taxpayers of Nicholas County, about $30 million of having to construct a new Somersville Elementary School. So I'm asking that you please vote for Plan Three. It only makes common sense. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Atkins. I'm a lifelong resident of Nicholas County. I've lived in Somersville for better part of my adult life, and I am here to speak in favor of map three for redistricting. Adoption of map four will leave the commission at great risk for a lawsuit. Map four makes Golly District much larger geographically than the other two, and it unnecessarily pits two duly-elected board members against each other and places complete control of the NCBOE in Richwood, which represents less than 1% of the population of the entire county. Adoption of map four would be an unprecedented power grab by county commission to repeal the legal actions of an elected board, and it seems to be aimed at eliminating Libby Kaufman, currently the only female serving on the board. Map Three is the closest in population distribution and geographical equity. It allows the citizens of this county to choose the directions of its school when it elects BOE members in the spring. Map Three will only move two districts instead of five. Like BOE members, commissioners are elected to represent the entire county. The current members of the BOE were duly-elected by a majority of voters in Nicholas County. Any attempt to unseat BOE members outside the election process through redistricting undermines the sanctity of our democratic process. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution when you took office. That oath requires that you honor our constitutional and democratic ideals. Your vote on the 15th should be about the responsible and honest reconfiguration of districts, not Somersville versus Richwood, not about the configuration of our schools. West Virginia law induces county school boards with the authority to govern public schools within their county. Let them do the job they were elected to do. It's time for the Civil War to come to an end. The configuration of our schools has been litigated and mediated. It's been approved by the majority of voters in this county, the Nicholas County Board of Education, the West Virginia Board of Education, the School Building Authority, the Department of Homeland Security, and a FEMA. Enough is enough. Our kids deserve to be in school as quickly as possible. Changing these district lines to shift the perceived power from Somersville to Richwood will absolutely result in construction delays. It cannot be denied. Supporters of map four have made that abundantly clear on social media. Our kids will suffer, all of them. Our county will never heal until these political power plays and tactics to delay our schools stop. Let the NCBOE do its job and build these schools.
I'm Kim Boleto from Campus, West Virginia. I urge the county commission to adopt map three for redistricting. It is the fairest and most responsible course of action. Map Three creates districts, the A district, that are closer in population and geographical area than map four. Map Three only moves two districts unlike map four, which moves five. Map Four would force two sitting BOE members to run against each other and effectively puts the city of Richwood in control of the board. As a taxpayer, I have serious concerns that accepting map four will lead to lawsuits. I think the county has better use of its money. We have fought over these schools long enough. Adoption of map four allows a handful of citizens to undo what an elected board legally approved, and that was supported by multiple state agencies and FEMA. This county will never heal until we stop allowing the minority to delay our progress. Our kids have been in pods for five years. Five long years. It's time to stop with the games and the delay tactics. It's time to build our schools. If you truly care about our students, and by students, I mean every last one of them. Every last one of them. Students who live in Zilla, Mount Nevo, Mount Lookout, Muddley, Birch River, Belva, let's not forget Dixie, Kessler's Cross Plains, Lockwood, Swiss, Somersville, Craigsville. Those students matter too. And it hurts me that those students get overlooked by too many people who want to focus just on their small little area of the county. You were elected to serve the entire county. Keep all of our students in mind when you make this decision. Do what's right. Adopt map three, and let's end the fight over our schools once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this topic. My name is Jordan Dietz. I'm a resident of Richwood, a member of our city council, and currently assigned to active duty with the United States Coast Guard. According to West Virginia Constitution, districts are required to be contiguous, compact, and to do our best not to split political subdivisions. The state recently enacted a congressional district map due to a loss of roughly 60,000 residents, according to the most recent census. Nicholas County has suffered a loss of nearly 1,800 residents, and this map should be redrawn to reflect our recent population shift. West Virginia Code, Chapter Seven, Article Two states the following with respect to redistricting. "Each county shall be laid off by the county court in two as nearly equal as can be in territory and population," circling back to the state's constitution of contiguous and compact. "The districts must be similar in population and size, and legally, no more than a 10% difference between the population of the largest and smallest districts." With the current map, our total difference between districts is 13%. This lies outside of the federal threshold of 10%. Birch River and Richwood are in the same district. This is not contiguous according to West Virginia Code. In addition, these two communities have separate educational needs and deserve to be in districts that can support those needs. Based on the pieces of evidence alone, one could deduce this current layout resembles gerrymandering. Regardless of the methods of the current design, the numbers and the law demand for change. Fortunately, we do not have to reinvent the wheel. We can go back to the manner in which the map was originally designed based on economy, political views, and logical boundaries. For example, turning to page two in the handout received this evening, take note of the last proposal. With this information, notice at the bottom of the page, the percentage difference between the largest and smallest districts is 2%, well below the 10% required by law. Boundaries are contiguous, compact, political subdivisions remain with their respective communities. Representation is fair and equal for each community to be represented legally and effectively. Each person's vote should count. That's democracy. With this proposed map, voters will be able to choose their representatives, not the other way around. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Any more speakers if you come up at this time?
I bet you didn't have this crowd 10 years ago when you went through redistricting. My name is Lawrence Tully, 1829 Webster Road, Somersville. I concur with proposal three. We should not get in another circus-like atmosphere, listening to a columnist in the newspaper who knows more than everybody about everything regarding the school, FEMA, government, and the like. If you look 10 years ago, the county's problems started in 2010. I conferred with Commissioner Cole. The county budget was about 40% greater in 2010. The county had to make cuts. The only thing missing since 2010 is the coal industry and the support groups that helped that. That's what paid the taxes. Someone was not doing their job. I'm not going to say who, because none of you gentlemen were on the commission at that time, but you were greatly reduced in money. The city of Somersville's budget is just a half a million dollars less than that of the county. That's because of proper management and good government and effective government. I have two children and five grandchildren all going to Nicholas County schools. This should be a vote about good government, not rehashing something that has been hashed over and over and over. It went to the Supreme Court, and who wasn't convicted, resigned in disgrace, and left office? We've been over this and over this and over this. Support good government. Support proper management. Support our children and families. These are all voters, and they all have children or grandchildren or relatives. We want a fair and equitable system, and System Three provides that. You gentlemen are the fiscal court of the county. Your budget was cut by millions, and you're half a million more than the city of Somersville. You're depending on CARES money from the federal government, supporting Nicholas County. The Nicholas County Board of Education brought over 100 extra million dollars by a proper decision, not based on a false narrative or a personal agenda, but by facts and figures. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Delegate Heather Tully. I represent District 41, which represents the largest and most populous portion of Nicholas County. The framers of the West Virginia Constitution did not invite outrageous and destructive political maneuvering with reapportement for redistricting, which is precisely what will happen if any other proposal other than proposal three is considered. I'm somebody that is not very long-winded, but what I will tell you is, when we look at making sure that the population deviation is where it needs to be, proposal number three has the least deviation between the three magisterial districts. That is what should be considered, and I do thank you for your time and attention.
Do we have any more speakers?
Hello. My name is Erin Thomas. I am a leader of Nicholas County, and I did not prepare to speak to you guys this evening. However, I just want to state, I have grown up and been raised in Nicholas County. I have four children who attend Nicholas County schools. I'm a teacher at Somersville Elementary School. And I just feel that as many of my coworkers are here tonight, we have tried to respectfully be silent and do our jobs as everyone is trying to do what's best for the students of our county. Last night, on our way to Green Bar West in Lewisburg, I was notified that this meeting was happening, less than 24 hours. My husband and I walked into the school, and we're just thinking, wow, wouldn't this be nice to have a school for our kids to go to? Not a pod. I attended Somersville Elementary School, as did my siblings, as did my parents, as did most of the people in this room. And I know we're not the only school, but we've been quiet, and our school's falling apart, and our students are suffering. And I just hope that as you make your decision, you truly do what's best in your heart, and know that we're not trying to fight. We want schools for every, we truly want schools for every kid in the county. I have friends in Richwood. I respect their feelings and their admiration and hopes of wanting schools. I understand. We want them too. And if this is going to prolong the process that we've kept quiet for since the flood or however long this has been going on, it's not worth it. Please, get our students, get the schools built, move forward, do what's right. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Dr. Gaspinix, President of the Nicholas County Board of Education. And this is not, we're hearing a lot about the Board of Education and the Heart of Business and that type of thing, but this is not just about the Board of Education. It's about you all making a responsible decision about what's in the best interest of the citizens of Nicholas County. And I like to begin by saying I am in favor of Plan Number Three for several different reasons. We heard quoted a few moments ago from someone here, that Chapter Seven, Article Two says as nearly as equal as possible. That's what you're charged with coming in to determine these magisterial districts. And if you look at Plan Three, and the people in the audience, if you're looking at Plan Three, it is the best representation of each and every individual citizen in Nicholas County. There's a 118 citizen disparity between the smallest magisterial district and the largest in Plan Three. It's much larger, it's larger in Plan Four. This is the best in the interest of our citizens, but also, it doesn't disturb the current setup of the county. We have two magisterial districts or two voting precincts that would be affected in Plan Three, five in Plan, in Plan Four. But I would just like to say to you that I do favor Plan Three, and it does, it lets every person's vote to the best possible be counted. And I do think that if one could only deduce if Plan Four is the one that's chosen, then it looks like it's, could only be viewed as an attempt by the, by the commission to take over the county Board of Education and their position. And I certainly don't think you all want to do that, and we neither, we want to take over the commission. But I urge you to think about the citizens of this county and the best possible representation. I think that's the key that we're talking about here tonight. And Plan Three is that, is apt to plan. So, thank you.
I too do not prepare speech, and I usually don't, don't speak without, you know, sitting down and getting everything out that I'm going to say. My name is Anita Jarrett. I am a lifelong resident of Nicholas County. I am also a teacher at Somersville Middle School and faculty president. I was there when my school flooded. I cleaned out my classroom. I disinfected everything. I threw away a lot. It is time to move forward. It is time to get these kids and the teachers out of these pods and to get us in an educational facility. It's, it's, it's time. I'm tired. I am. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. We have fought this faith, this, this whole race. We have turned against each other. It's, it's just been awful. I am a lifelong resident of Nicholas County. I am also a teacher at Somersville Middle School and faculty president. I was there when my school flooded. I cleaned out my classroom. I disinfected everything. I threw away a lot. It is time to move forward. It is time to get these kids and the teachers out of these pods and to get us in an educational facility. It's, it's, guys, it's time. I'm tired. I am. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. We have fought this faith, this whole race. We have turned against each other. It's just been awful. I love my kids. I love what I do. But this has to stop. This does. It's time to move forward. It is time to get these schools built. It is time for me to be in my new classroom so I can move forward. Because I'm going to be there. I'm not retiring until I get things. Okay? Let me just tell you. Wear stuff with me. But we need these schools, guys. I don't want to go back five years. I don't want to. It is time to go forward. So I do support Plan 3 100% so we can move forward. Thank you.
And just a reminder, we're taking written comments. There we go. Turn this way. We're taking written comments from the crowd here tonight. Just bring them up to Clerk Painter. And of course, any more speakers that would like to come up at this time, we welcome you to the podium. Okay. I'm back. That being said, like I say, if you want to have your written comments, we can give you a few minutes if you'd like. If not, we can go ahead and conclude this meeting. So as a formal final call, is there anyone else that would like to address the commission here tonight?
What do we do with the index cards?
Again, written comments come to the box here to Clerk Painter, and he will ensure that it becomes part of the record of this public hearing. Okay, we do have a speaker, so don't run off just yet.
My name is Jennifer Foreman. I'm an English teacher at Somersville Middle School. Today in class, I was sitting in my first period, and it was the first thing I'd heard of this. I was out of town for the last week, so I was unaware of this meeting until this morning. I took the opportunity to discuss this with my class. The students should have a say. They should have a voice, understand they're too young to understand all the political ramifications that are going on. But this doesn't simply resemble gerrymandering. It is. We're moving areas. We're changing the places that we voted for people. And it feels like it's being done without the permission of the voters, of the people who put the Board of Education into place. If this is about stopping the new schools or postponing the building or changing it, sometime we have to put our children first, not just ours, but Richwood's, all children, all of our community. We're not two separate communities. We are one community. Our children don't have the issues that we as adults or parents have. They're very, very methodical in their thinking, and they're very simple. We want new schools. We've been in pods too long. They're doing their very best to learn, and I'm doing my very best to teach, as are my colleagues. But we really need the tools to do that, and a new school is mandatory as soon as possible. If Option 3 will allow us to move forward and get new schools for Richwood and for Somersville, it's time. My students need a place to call home, as do I and my colleagues. And by colleagues, I mean teachers in Richwood and Somersville. We all need a peace of mind and a place to call home where we can really put our focus on education. So I really am asking you, please, to consider Option 3. Thank you for your time.
Afternoon, commissioners. My name's BJ Smith. I'm not a politician. I'm not a teacher. I do have students. I do have children here. I am a youth coach. I have been for 12 years now. I'm not rehearsed, so please excuse me. Again, I'm not a politician, so I'm not real familiar with what all this does and doesn't mean. But obviously, it's going to affect our BOE. It's going to affect our students. It's going to affect the schools. Whatever happens, make this go quick. Get these students in the classroom, get these students on a field, to have their athleticism, to have their education. These kids are our future. So if we keep bouncing back into the past, we can't move forward. We have to think about the benefit of our children. We've had our time. Now's their time. We've got to get them in an atmosphere to learn. We've got to get them in an atmosphere to exert their energy, because Lord knows what they're going to do if they don't have something as an outlet. Please, with your decision, from what I'm telling you, Plan 3 is the plan we need to go with. Get these schools built as soon as possible. Get these kids back to normal life. Thank you.
Yet again, very unprepared, but just listening tonight, I felt like I had to come up here. Guys, I don't have a dog in this hunt. I'm not from Nicholas County. I am now. I married a very beautiful woman from here. Started out in Beckley. She brought me here, and I'll be straight up, I love it here. I find the people to be very loving, very accepting. I also teach school at the VOTEC, where both groups come together. And I see Richwood kids helping Somersville kids. I see Somersville kids helping Richwood kids. It's not, we don't have this fight with the kids. And I've told my kids upfront, guys, I'm Switzerland. 100%. I'm Switzerland, but I want you all in schools. And one thing to think about, I have been told that a lot to do with this redistricting is a screw you to Somersville. I've heard that. I can't say this is, that's what I've heard. If we're doing it just for that, what's the point? Richwood, ladies from Richwood admitted that it needs to be the most equitable plan and even. That's Plan 3. And one thing to throw out, if all of this junk wouldn't have been going on, we would be in the new schools. That's all I'm asking. Not, well, we're going to screw Richwood, or we're going to screw Somersville, or we're, none of that. Do what's best for us as a county and do what's best for our students. They don't have the animosity that the parents do. Hate to say it, but the animosity's not there from the kids. Let's let it, let's let sleeping dogs lie and get this done. It's time. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Brady Crawford, and I live in Kessler's Crosslanes. My son goes to that kind of elementary. When this first happened, my son was in kindergarten, okay? He starts middle school next year. We're going to pods. That's the reality of his situation, that he shouldn't be starting middle school in pods. They should already have been built, okay? Second, I'm a teacher at Somersville Elementary. And as Erin said, we need a new school, but we have been quiet. We have not raised any kind of breakfast with any of this because our students come first. And if you ask the kids what they want, they just want a school to go to. I want my son to graduate from a school. But at this point, if we keep this up, it's not going to happen. So we need to relate, we need to get a MAP 3, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kara Priest, and I live in Somersville. I have six children that go to school here. And I have a child in kindergarten all the way up into eighth grade. I know in my heart, my eighth grader's never going to see a school. She never will. Just because this happened so long ago, she's going to be in a pod. She's going to go to the high school. She's never going to see a new school. But let's focus on this, that these kids are going to be in these pods and in these schools that have all these construction issues. They've got sewer problems. They've got water problems. They've got all this stuff. Our kids, our children, are sitting there breathing that stuff in. Not to mention what's happened the last two years. Our children are being taught by teachers in pods with iPads because of COVID. They have iPads in pods with teachers that are nots. They don't feel at home. We need a place where these people can feel at home, and so what that COVID's hit and we've got iPads? Let's get them in a place where they can feel at home and at peace. What's going to happen? I've got a kindergartner right now that I'm really worried that he's going to go to school in a pod. That's the reality of it. Why do I want my child to go to school in a pod? They're all separated, and what's to happen if, God forbid, a shooting happen? I mean, what's going to, what's going to save them? Nothing. It's a pod. It's a trailer. It's not safe, and neither are the schools that we have in Nicholas County right now. They're not safe for our kids that we have right now. We need to go with Proposal Number 3. Get our kids, including Richwood children, in their schools and get them educated because they are the future of our state and America. And I've had enough of it. Thank you.
Do we have any other presenters? Yeah, like, yeah, if you go on once, go on twice. I won't do it again. But as a portable blast, there we go. We'll do it again. Do you have a coffee? Oh, okay, all right. So that being said, again, here is your final call for comments to the commission here tonight. You can, but really, in public comment and the manner in which the county commission does preside, it's the commissioner's option to answer. So that being said, again, written comments, if you would like them to be a part of the record, make sure they are submitted to the county clerk here on your way out. We appreciate your all's attendance here tonight. Thank you.